Hi, thank you very much for watching our channel. Thank you very much for connecting with our live service. Hope that you are so blessed. Do not stop there, subscribe our channel. There's daily devotion, there is a lot of things, surprising things, that can bring a blessing to your life. And if you are around in Dublin or Bali Faroe, please do visit our church. I guarantee that that will make a change in your life. And we got a prayer team that can pray for you. If anything that we can, you know, stand on the gap for you, please let us know through our social media that you can connect through the prayer team. You can visit our website. And do not forget to share this, you know, our channel to others so that others also will experience what you are experiencing in your life. May God bless you. Good to come into your house. Praise God. The day that the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in the Lord. Amen. Hallelujah. Amen. Amen. Shall we all stand in the presence of God? Praise God. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah. Amen. Going to start the service. So, the Bible says in ICH chapter 60, verse from 1. Our eyes shine, for the light is come, and the glory of the Lord is risen upon thee. For behold, the darkness shall cover the earth, and gross darkness the people. But the Lord shall rise upon thee, and his glory shall be seen upon thee. And the gendiles shall come to the light, and kings to the brightness of thy rising. Lift up thy eyes round about and see all that gather themselves together. They came, they come to thee. The sun shall come from far, and the daughter shall be nursed at thy side. Hallelujah. Amen. This is a day as the Lord has done. You know, we can see on the city, there's a lot of other different type of decoration and everything. But we are here to celebrate our King of King and the Lord of Lord. The true living light is our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen. As he said, "I am the light of the world." And he asked us to shine his light to the world. We are the light also. God said, "We are the salt to the earth." Amen. I welcome all of you, those who connect in the livestream, wherever you are, being that you did a prayer. And this service will impact God's glory in your life in Jesus' name. Amen. Hallelujah. Shall we pray? Amen. Let's close our eye if we can. Thank you, Jesus. Father God, we look unto your throne of grace. God, my Father, King of King and the Lord of Lord, God Almighty. The great that I am, that I am, my God. Elshadai, God, Elroehi, God. God of wonders, mighty everlasting God. Oh, we thank you, God. You're the same yesterday and today and forever. We lift up our guard, my Lord. Our eyes to the hill. Where does our help come from? Our help come from the Maker of heaven and earth, the King of glory. We surrender this meeting entirely to your mighty hands. It's not about our preparation. It's not about a God, my Lord, a person. But it's all about you, King of glory. Let the Holy Spirit of God fill this place with your divine power and authority in the name of Jesus. I pray that so coming you God on the way, Lord God, those who decided to come, you will bring your people and let them receive this blessing in the mighty name of Jesus, oh Lord God, my King. We come against every plan and woke up the devil, every power and principality, every stronghold of the demon, God, every territorial spirit that stand against this meeting, against the blessings of people. We bind and arrest and demolish and destroy them now. They come only relevant in the mighty name of Jesus, oh God, my Father. Let God arise. All his enemy be scattered in the name of Jesus. We give all the glory and honor and adoration to you, Godfather. Jesus Christ, almighty and blessed and wonderful name, we ask this prayer. Amen. Amen. Let's give a big clap offering to the Lord as we start the service. Amen.
Amen. Hallelujah. God is worthy to be praised. He deserves all the glory tonight, all the honor. So I invite you to join us as we worship the King of glory, as we worship him, as we welcome his presence. The Bible says where two or three are gathered in his name, that he will be in the midst of us. And we believe that Jesus is here. The Holy Spirit is here. He is moving. He is working in this place. And let's just welcome him. I just encourage you to just begin to open your mouth and bring praises to the Lord. Just begin to thank him. Just begin to bless his name. Whatever language you are able to, begin to lift up the name of Jesus, God. We worship you. We magnify and we adore you. God, you deserve the glory. God, you deserve the honor tonight. That it's only by your grace and your grace alone that we are here in this presence, Jesus, to worship your holy name. God, we give you all the glory. God, we give you all the honor. Jesus, there is none like you. Jesus, there is none to compare to you. You are the Alpha and you are the Omega. You are the beginning and you are the end. And God, we just worship that holy name, the name of Jesus. Oh, Jesus. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we lift your holy name. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we lift your holy name. You deserve the glory and the honor. We lift our hands.
Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we lift your holy name. You deserve the glory.
And the honor.
And the honor.
We lift our hands.
Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we lift your holy name.
You deserve the glory.
You deserve the glory.
And the honor.
And the honor.
Can you lift your hands in the presence of the Lord?
Lord, we lift our hands in worship.
To bless your holy name as we bless your holy. You deserve the glory.
You deserve the glory.
All the honor.
And the honor.
Oh, we lift our hands.
Lord, we lift our hands in worship.
One more time. You deserve the glory.
You deserve the glory.
Oh, and the honor. Yes, Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we lift your holy name. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we lift your holy name. And you are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. For you are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. There is. For you are great. For you are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. Yes, there is no one else like you. For you are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we lift your holy name. You deserve the glory and the honor. Lord, we lift our hands in worship as we lift your holy. For you are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one like you, Jesus. There is no one. You are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. Build it up. There is no one else. For you are great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. Yes, there is no one else like you. For he is great. You do miracles so great. There is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. And there is no one else like you. There is no one else like you. There is no one. There is no one else like you. Can you just lift up your voice and give a clap offering to the Lord? And just say, "God, there is no one else like you, Jesus. We worship you, God."
Amen. Lord, there is no one like you in all of heaven and all of earth. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Amen. Are you happy to be in the house of the Lord tonight? Are you sure you're happy to be in the house of the Lord? Can we turn around and tell someone, "Welcome to church tonight." Welcome to church tonight. Welcome to church tonight. Tell somebody else, "Welcome to church." Hallelujah. We're going to discuss of the joy of the Lord. We're going to sing a song that really exalts the Lord because the joy of the Lord is our strength. Amen? Can we say, "The joy of the Lord is our strength"? Can we say, "The joy of the Lord is my strength"? "The joy of the Lord is my strength." Hallelujah. Come on, your hands. Keep clapping. Keep clapping. Keep clapping. Yes, the joy of the Lord is our strength. Say, "This is the day you made. So I rejoice and be glad. Rejoice and be glad in it." Say, "This is..." "This is where I believe that you are more than enough, more than enough for me." You are faithful. You are faithful to your promise. You are strong when I am weak. When I'm standing in your presence, I have everything I need. Say, "The joy." "The joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." "The joy of the Lord." "The joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." "Oh, my soul." "Oh, my soul. Bless his name. All that is within me say, the joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." Go ahead. Some of you are not even moving like, you're not even clapping. You're not moving nothing. You're just like this. Come on. It's the joy of the Lord, your strength tonight. I know that it's been a tough day. It's been a long day. But the Lord is your strength. Hallelujah. Can you declare it? "The Lord is my strength." And we find joy in the Lord. Amen. Say, "Jesus, come what may. You are worthy of all, worthy of all my praise. And you are faithful to your promise. You are strong when I am weak. When I'm standing in your presence, I have everything I need." The joy. "The joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." Yes, more than a feeling. "The joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." "Oh, my soul." "Oh, my soul. Bless his name. All that is within me say, the joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." Everyone will say, "Oh." Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, 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 oh. 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 Very simple. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. So let it rise up like a river overflowing, Holy Spirit. Let it pour out with no limit, overflowing, Holy Spirit. Let it rise up. Let it rise up like a river overflowing, Holy Spirit. Let it pour out with no limit, overflowing, Holy Spirit. Oh, oh, oh. 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 Oh, 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 oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Sing the joy. "The joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." It's more than a feeling. "The joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." Say, "Oh, my soul." "Oh, my soul. Bless his name. All that is within me say, oh, my soul." "Oh, my soul. Bless his name. All that is within me say, oh, my soul. Bless his name. All that is within me say, oh, my soul. Bless his name. All that is within me say, the joy of the Lord. The joy of the Lord is my strength." Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, 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 oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Oh, oh, oh. Can we raise a shout? A hallelujah in the house? For the joy of the Lord is our strength and he is worthy of all worship. Hallelujah.
Amen. Hallelujah. Church, in the ministry of Jesus, we like to dance. Okay? We like to praise God by actions and by moving our body. So I encourage you for the next song. It talks about God being able, that he's able to do exceedingly. He's able to do abundantly. And if you have anything in your heart that you're believing God for, God is able to do it by actions as well. Okay? The people marched around Jericho. So you need to do some marching. You need to do some clapping. Okay? Amen. Let's clap our hands. Hallelujah. He is able. Can I hear a hallelujah? Hallelujah. Come on, church. Hallelujah. On table. Creator. Creator of the universe. What can't you do? What can't you do, Jesus? His name above every other name. What can't you change? What can't you change, Jesus? Creator. Creator of the universe. What can't you do? What can't you do? Oh, what can't you do? What can't you do, Jesus? His name above. Name above every other name. What can't you change? What can't you change? What can't you change? What can't you change? Jesus. He is able. You are able, great and mighty God. You are able, Jesus. He is able. You are able, great and mighty God. You are able. You are able, Jesus. Let's sing, "Creator of the universe." Creator of the universe. What can't you do? What can't you do? What can't you do, Jesus? His name above. Name above every other name. Oh, what can't you change? What can't you change? What can't you change? What can't you change? Jesus. He is able. You are able, great and mighty God. You are able, Jesus. He is able. You are able, great and mighty God. You are able. You are able, Jesus. There is nothing. Nothing you cannot do. Nothing you cannot change. Nothing you cannot change. Nothing you cannot turn. Nothing you cannot. Turn around. Turn around. You are able, great and mighty God. I put my trust in you. I put my trust in you. There is nothing. There is nothing. Nothing. Nothing you cannot do. There is nothing you cannot change. Nothing you cannot change. There's nothing you cannot turn. Nothing you cannot. Turn around. Turn around. You are able, great and mighty God. I put my trust in you. I put my trust in you. Oh. You are able, Jesus. You are able. You are able, Jesus. You are able, great and mighty God. You are able, Jesus. He is able. You are able. Great and mighty God. Great and mighty God. You are able, Jesus. There is nothing. Nothing you cannot do. Nothing you cannot change. Nothing you cannot turn around. You are able, great and mighty God. I put my trust in you. There is nothing. There is nothing. Nothing. Nothing you cannot do. There's nothing you cannot change. Nothing you cannot change. There's nothing you cannot turn. Nothing you cannot. Turn around. You are able. Great and mighty God. I put my trust in you. I put my trust in you. There is nothing. There is nothing. Nothing. Nothing you cannot do. There's nothing you cannot change. Nothing you cannot change. There's nothing you cannot turn. Nothing you cannot. Turn around. You are able, great and mighty God. I put my trust in you. I put my trust in you. Oh. You are able, Jesus. Come on, give a clap offering to God. If God is able to do exceedingly, abundantly, above you can think or ask. He is able. Hallelujah. Yes, Jesus, we worship you. Oh, God, we give praise. We love you for your greatness. Jesus, we worship you. Hallelujah. Father, you are able to do all things. And you are beautiful beyond description, God. So beautiful, God. Yes, Lord, there is no one like you, oh God. You are perfect in all your ways. Your name is perfect. Your name is beautiful. Your name is excellent, oh God. Your name is strong, powerful. The devil runs away at the sound of your name. The devil runs away at the sound of your name. You are the word from the beginning. One with God, the Lord most high. Your hidden glory in creation. Now revealed in your eye, Christ. What a beautiful name it is. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a beautiful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a beautiful name it is. The name of Jesus. Didn't want heaven without us. So Jesus, you brought heaven down. My sin was great. Your love was greater. What could separate us now? What a wonderful name it is. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a wonderful name it is. Nothing compares to this. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus.
What a wonderful name.
What a wonderful name it is. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a wonderful name it is.
Nothing compares.
Nothing compares to this. What a wonderful name it is. The name of Jesus. The name, the name, the name of Jesus. Even the cave do not hold. And even death do not hold. This powerful name, this powerful name. Death could not hold you. The veil tore before you. Your silence, the bumps of sin and grave. The heavens are roaring. The praise of your glory. For you were raised to life again. And you have no rival. You have no equal. Now and forever, God, you reign. Yours is the kingdom. Yours is the glory. Yours is the day above all.
Say, "Death could not hold you."
Death could not hold you. The veil tore before you. Your silence, the bumps of sin and grave. The heavens are roaring. The praise of your glory. For you were raised to life again.
Say, "You have no rival."
And you have no rival.
You have no equal.
And you have no equal. 'Cause now and forever, God, you reign.
And yours is the kingdom.
'Cause yours is the kingdom.
Yours is the glory.
Yours is the glory.
Yours is the day.
Above all.
Say, "You have no rival."
And you have no rival. And you have no equal. 'Cause now and forever, God, you reign.
Yours is the kingdom.
'Cause yours is the kingdom. And yours is the glory. Yours is the name above all.
Say, "You have no rival."
And you have no rival. And you have no equal. And now and forever, God, you reign. Yours is the kingdom. Yours is the glory. Yours is the name above all. What a powerful name it is. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus Christ, my King. What a powerful name it is. Nothing can stand against. What a powerful name it is. The name of Jesus. 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 Oh, Jesus. A beautiful name. Oh, we speak your name, Jesus. Oh, death could not hold you, Jesus. No grave could hold you, God. Just begin to open your mouth and speak to the name of Jesus. That name of Jesus has healing. The name of Jesus has life. Can I have a church to open their mouths and give praise to the name of Jesus? Give praise to the name of Jesus. That dimension of the name of Jesus. Every knee bows. And every tongue confesses Jesus is Lord. Are you tired to worship this kingdom of glory? Are you tired to worship the Alpha and Omega? who can open their mouth in the presence of the Lord and give God a shout? And give God glory? Hallelujah. Jesus, we worship you. Jesus, we adore you. Jesus, we lift up a praise to your name. Shout, Jesus, from the mountain. And Jesus in the trees. Jesus in the darkness over every enemy. And Jesus, for my family, I speak the holy name, Jesus. Shout, Jesus. Shout, Jesus. Shout, Jesus, from the mountain. And Jesus in the trees. Jesus in the darkness.
Jesus in the darkness over every enemy.
And Jesus, for my family.
Jesus, for my family.
I speak the holy name, Jesus. Shout, Jesus. Shout, Jesus. Shout, Jesus, from the mountain. Jesus in the trees. And Jesus in the darkness.
Jesus in the darkness over every enemy.
And Jesus, for my family.
Jesus, for my family.
I speak the holy name. Jesus. One more time. Shout, Jesus. Shout, Jesus, from the mountain. And Jesus in the trees. Jesus in the darkness.
Jesus in the darkness over every enemy.
And Jesus, for my family.
Jesus, for my family.
I speak the holy name, Jesus. Your name. Your name is power. Your name is healing. Your name is life.
Your name is life.
Break every stronghold. Break every stronghold. Shine through the shadows. Burn like a fire. Your name is power. Your name is power. Your name is healing. Your name is life. Break every stronghold. Shine through the shadows. Burn like a fire. Your name is power. Your name is healing. Your name is life. Break every stronghold. Shine through the shadows. Burn like a fire. You are holy. Are you, Lord God Almighty? Worthy is the Lamb. Worthy is the Lamb. You are holy. And are you, Lord God Almighty? Worthy is the Lamb. Worthy is the. You are holy. You are holy. You're holy. And are you, Lord God Almighty? Worthy is the Lamb. Oh, worthy is the Lamb. You are holy.
You are holy.
You are holy, holy, holy. And are you, Lord God Almighty? Yes, worthy is the Lamb. Worthy is the Lamb. And amen. Amen.
Declare it for your life.
Amen.
Amen, God.
Amen.
Oh, hallelujah.
Amen.
Look unto the throne of God and tell him, "Amen." With elders, "Hallelujah." For you are holy, God Almighty. Everyone, I confess you. He is worthy.
Worthy.
Hallelujah.
Worthy.
For you are holy, oh God Almighty.
You're holy.
Oba sadala boku ra bala. Are you, Lord God Almighty? Declare it, he is worthy. Jesus. Hallelujah. The life was planned on the cross. He is worthy.
Holy.
Hallelujah.
Holy.
Look unto the throne of God and tell him, "Father, you're holy."
Oh, God. Almighty.
Oba sadala boku.
Worthy is the Lamb.
Find that you're worthy, oh God.
Worthy is the Lamb.
Come on, give a big love offering to the Lord God Almighty. Open your mouth and tell him, "Lord, you're holy." Come on, praise him and worship him. Exalt the name of God. Open your mouth. Bring your own song to the Lord God Almighty. Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Come on, speak the name of Jesus over your life. Speak the name of Jesus over your situation. Speak the name of over, hallelujah. Oh, in this meeting, amen, so that you will not go out as you came in. You will came in this place. Hallelujah. Now God will fulfill his purpose over your life. Speak, amen, speak the most high name. The name that's the name of all name. The power above power. Hallelujah. Yes, Lord, yes, Lord, hallelujah. Oh, we thank you, Jesus. Speak the name of Jesus. Jesus in the mountain. Jesus in the valley. Jesus over your family. Jesus over your house. Hallelujah. Jesus over your situation. Hallelujah. There's no other name. There's no other name. Only one name that has been given. Oh, under the heaven, above the earth, the name of Jesus Christ of Nazareth. In that name, everyone needs to go. Our tongue will confer that Jesus Christ is the Lord and Savior. Come on, lift up your voice and praise him and exalt him. Hallelujah. Let the Holy Spirit of God, amen, inhabit your praise, sir. Let the Spirit of God inhabit your praise, sir. Come on, people of God, open your mouth. Don't be silent in the presence of God. Hallelujah. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Yes, Lord, we praise you, God Almighty. Oh, we lift you up higher, oh God, my Father. We magnify the Lord. Glorify the Lord. Exalt him with the highest. Hallelujah. Oh, how sweet is our God, amen. Hallelujah. Great is the Lord and greatly to be praised. Great is the Lord and greatly to be praised. Exalt him with the highest people of God. Open your mouth and declare the glory belongs to him. Hallelujah. Oba sadala boku ra bala. Mama handira boku ra. Sadala boku ra baba. Handira boku ra. Yes, Lord, God, my Father. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Oba sadala boku ra. Oh, glory, 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 glory. Let your spirit set up glory in this house. Set up glory in this house. Oh, hallelujah. Katsimis fire. Oh, hallelujah, consume his fire. Consume his fire. Magnify the Lord. Oh, let him consume his fire over your life. Rabo sadala, bokhul, rabbaba bala, hondira, bokhulu. Thank you, Jesus, thank you, Jesus, hallelujah. O rabbas sadala, bokhulu. Jesus in the mountain, Jesus in the valley, oh God, my Father. There is no other name, hallelujah. Yes, oh God, my Lord, God, my King of glory. Oh, we praise you, Jesus. What a beautiful name we serve. What a wonderful name we serve. What a glorious name we serve. We stand in the name of Jesus. As we gather in his name, he promised, two or three gather, that he is a God who comes down. What a great privilege we got, my beloved people of God. Who are we for God to consider us, for him to come down to honor our gathering. Oh, the greater God who has created the heaven and death. He promises he will come down when we gather in his name. No matter who we are, hallelujah. No matter how worst we are, but we gather in his name, two or three gather, that he said, he promised that he will come down. He is here in our midst, hallelujah. Let God arise over this meeting. Let God lead us from glory to glory, power to power. Let us pray over this meeting. The Lord's glory will be revealed in our midst, hallelujah, in Jesus' name. Amen, can I ask my wife to come forward and lead us in prayer for the blessing of the remaining of this meeting, amen.
Hallelujah.
Thank you, Jesus.
We praise you, master. We praise you, we praise you.
Hallelujah.
Oh, hallelujah.
Yes, Lord.
You deserve all the glory.
Amen, thank you, Jesus.
All the honor, all the praises unto you, oh Lord.
Thank you, God.
Here we are gathered together.
Hallelujah.
To sing unto you how great you are.
Thank you, Jesus.
How wonderful you are, Almighty God. We want to thank you, Father.
Thank you, Father.
All that you are doing in our life, oh God.
King of glory.
The very breath, oh God.
Amen.
You blow in our nostrils every morning. My dear son, my dear daughter, I blow my air into your nostril. Therefore galeth and praise my name.
Amen.
Almighty God, we thank you, Father.
Hallelujah.
Thank you for gathering all of us together, here, oh God.
King of glory.
Mighty God, take complete control. From the beginning till the end, oh God.
Amen, oh God, my King.
O reba karaba.
Thank you, Jesus.
Lord, I pray for the man of God.
Oh God, my Father.
Pastor John Joyson, oh God. Mighty God, thank you for bringing things in this midst of us, oh God.
Amen, oh God, my Father.
Mighty God, I thank you for this wonderful opportunity you have given us, oh God.
Hallelujah.
Speak through him, oh God.
Amen, oh God.
Speak through him, oh God.
Yes, my Father.
You will be revealed to him, oh God.
Hallelujah.
What you have for us.
Thank you, Jesus.
Lord, you speak to each and every one gathered here tonight, oh God.
Name of Jesus.
Let there be bondage breaking. Let there be breakers.
Yes.
Let there be signs and wonders, oh God.
Hallelujah, yes, Father God.
Speak to us, master.
Hallelujah.
May be our spiritual life to be built up, oh God. Tonight you build us, oh God.
Yes, oh God.
Once again, we are sanctified in ourselves too. Hear from you, master.
Amen, oh King of glory.
You take a room, master.
Hallelujah.
I give you all the glory and honor unto you, master.
Amen, oh God.
In Jesus' almighty name, I ask this prayer.
Amen, amen.
Amen.
Amen, amen. Come on, give a big clap offering to the Lord God Almighty. Thank you, hallelujah. You may be seated now. Amen, hallelujah. Oh, God is good?
All the time.
All the time.
All the time.
Amen, is God good to you?
Yes.
Amen, come on, say indeed, God is good to me.
Indeed.
Hallelujah, amen, hallelujah. Amen, look at somebody and say, this is a day that the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it, come on. Speak out so that your joy will not go down, hallelujah. Your joy will increase definitely in Jesus' name. Amen, good to see you all for making yourself available for this special meeting. Amen, even though it's a weekday, but God has blessed us with a bank holiday of for us to gather as the saints of God, as the children of the most high God, amen. Hallelujah, welcome all of you. Those who are connecting the live stream, may the Lord bless you wherever you are from. This meeting will be a blessing to you in Jesus' mighty name, hallelujah. Amen, there's a few announcements, if you are attending first time in this building, there's toilets and kitchen there. You can have water or want to use the toilet or anything. It's in that side, so just for your information. Then maybe we can make the... This week, as we know that Ireland is celebrating something that we don't celebrate, you know. The Lord has ordained light to this earth and about Ireland. Ireland is, as per my knowledge, that I heard that Ireland is the one organized Halloween. So, but we churches together, about six, seven years now, we have been doing something called, on the same day, National Praise Day. So, that day we are, we want to redeemed instead of, you know, bringing under the bondage of darkness, bringing praises to lift up the name of Jesus. So, there's two things happening, one, our church, we always do, every year, we do non-stop worship for six hours. So, that's taking place on this Friday from six a.m., oh no, nine a.m. to three p.m. Nine a.m. to three p.m. Mostly it's not our worship team, it will be the families, they will take partake for fifteen minutes or half an hour slot. So, if anyone of you are free that day, you are welcome to attend that non-stop worship from morning nine a.m. to three p.m. Then there is a National Praise Day, that is the churches together, that's taking place. Usually it will happen in one common ground, but this year we could not get it. Hopefully next year it will be a big event. So, this year, there's two places it's taking place. One is in Trinity Church in city center and another one in Solid Rock Church in Ingycore. So, both will be happening the same time. So, those who are easy to go to city center, you can attend on Trinity Church. And those who are close to Ingycore, be part of that. Let the light shine upon this nation of Ireland, hallelujah. Amen, unless you and me, we gather together, how can we redeem this nation for the Lord? So, when churches and pastors take this decision to do something, you know, a spiritual impact over the nation, it is important, we as believers, as leaders, we are to come together, hallelujah, amen. So, you know, even though you cannot attend three hours, but you can be a part of that for half an hour or one hour to encourage and to lift up the name of God, hallelujah, amen. So, those are the announcements and just for church information, the shoeboxes are there. So, I announced last Sunday, some of you said today, I forgot, so there's only a few left. If you are able to fill the shoeboxes for the poor and needy people, children especially during the Christmas. So, we are connected with Billy Graham Ministry this time, the Samaritan Administration. So, they are the one organizing this shoe collection. So, then coming Sunday is the last Sunday, we had to, they will come and collect whether we fill or not, there are a lot of shoeboxes gone. So, if anyone, you're willing to take the shoeboxes, one or two, make your children to fill that, you know. Take them to the shop and get things and let them fill that. And they will know how great privilege they have it in this nation, amen. There are children, those who are in need in different part of the world. So, let us share the hospital, let us bring the real practical Christianity around the world in Jesus' name, amen. Hallelujah, those are the announcements and we got a fasting prayer of our church also this Saturday, amen. So, that will be from ten thirty to two. If anyone, you're free, you are more than welcome to join that also, amen. Now is the time, we're going to welcome, we have a music school in our church, which is run by Pastor Gospel. Very well-recognized music teacher of London Music School. So, he normally teaches about five, six instruments, official instrument. He will, he will take children for grade exams and all that, keyboard, drums, saxophone and violin. So, yeah, so those kind of, now us, they are a music school. There are a lot of, lot of students, they are studying, especially, he has a center in the city center and he does the class in the building also after our service every Sunday. So, but he's doing a free lessons for some of our great army who support the evangelism on the streets. So, now their team is going to come and going to present a music performance, it's a special number. While they are doing that, let's slowly take our offering to bless today's meeting. So, as you are here to receive God's blessing, let us give unto the Lord cheerfully so that all that we receive, it will go to the administration of the guest preacher, hallelujah. So, now let's put our hands to welcome the music to come, to come forward, amen, hallelujah. While they are doing that, we will take our offering, us just be ready for that.
Praise the Lord.
Hallelujah.
We are happy to be here this evening. Our first song is reminding us that this is the program of the Lord. The Lord has planned for you to be here today. And our second song is reminding us that hence this invitation is from the Lord, that there will be showers of blessings. In a meeting like this, expect your miracle. Maybe some of you have arried for so many years, so many months, for one particular problem or the other. I want to assure you that when you open yourself and open your faith and open your spiritual eyes to follow what the Lord has prepared for you in this meeting, you will never go back the same as you came. That is what I want to let you know, hallelujah.
Come on, let's praise it, come on, hallelujah. Are you blessed? Amen, say I'm blessed.
Amen.
Amen, shall we all stand in the presence of God. It's going to pray now towards God's word, amen, hallelujah. Heavenly Father, we thank you, we exalt your holy name. How glorious and marvelous and wonderful you are. You bless your name, my God, for this wonderful time. And you've given us a great privilege and honor to worship you. We lift up your holy name, my God, Father. I thank you, God, for, Lord God, blessing us in the area of finance so that we could able to your blessing in the kingdom of God, my Father. I pray that a God will receive all this offering, a God, my Lord God, as people of God, they given. I pray that he will receive it, sanctify and use it for your divine glory in the name of Jesus, a God, my Father. I pray that a God according to your promises, that he will open the windows of heaven and he will reward them greatly and richly in the name of Jesus, a God, Father. We look on your face, this is the Lord, even you, oh God, my Lord. Thank you, God, for bringing your servant in our midst, a God, my Lord. Oh, Father, you would cover him under your glory and reveal, a God, more of you and less of him in the name of Jesus, a God, my Father. You would take control over every word that a God going to be proceeded in this place in the name of Jesus, a God. Let it bring a God, revival, restoration, deliverance, a God, my Father. The mighty name of Jesus, a God, Father in heaven. Take control over God, everything in the name of Jesus. Let it open our spiritual eyes, a God, Father. We give you glory and honor and adoration to you, Jesus Christ, almighty and blessed and wonderful name we ask this prayer. Amen, amen, you may be seated now, hallelujah. God is good?
All the time.
All the time.
All the time.
Amen, hallelujah, are you all ready?
Oh, yes.
Amen, amen, this is a special moment. Pastor John Joyson, John Som Joyson, you know, have been used by God so gloriously in the recent years. But the reason began that, you know, that has been, price has been paid. His daddy's a pastor. His daddy is a pastor who came in the Lord from a Hindu background and kicked out of the house and went to another state in India. And he stood for the Lord. And there he got married, which is our hometown. And so his daddy is no more, went with the Lord, a great man of God. And now the Lord is using the beloved children to carry forward the ministry. These are the bigger lessons for each one of us. You know, what God can do for one who serve into our generation. Hallelujah. Pastor, come, Pastor Teretaraj, please come forward. Amen. Hallelujah. So I'm just connecting with Pastor Johnson Joyceon only now, but I know his elder brother, Pastor Bensom, who is in Singapore, working and doing God's ministry. So he visited us about three times in Ireland. And he came to our house. Each time he comes, he will come to our house and be with us. So we become a good friend. Now, without taking much time, we're going to welcome the man of God going to speak to us. Let's put our hands to welcome Pastor John Joyceon. Amen. Come forward. Let's lift our hands and give glory to God Almighty. Hallelujah. I greet you all in the presence, name of the Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. I really thank and praise God for a great privilege and honor God has given me to come in the midst of each one of you. I bless this church called Ministry of Jesus from the bottom of my heart. Our God is good. I greet and bless Pastor Jaisalan and his family this evening. Worship team, they have done such a wonderful worship and I bless them in the name of the Lord, Jesus Christ. May the Lord bless each one of you as you gather. We're going to hear God's word this evening. I strongly believe that God is going to speak to each one of you and God is going to enlighten something inside of your life. We do not need a preaching, but we need a word of God. We did not gather here for hearing a preaching, but we here, to hear the God's word. May the Lord speak to us from his word. Let's turn our Bible to First Peter, chapter two. First Peter, chapter two, verse 22. I'm going to read in, Pastor is going to read in Tamil, then we will read it in English. For even, for even here unto where you are called, because Christ also suffered for us, leaving us an example that ye should follow his steps. Let's all close our eye and we're going to pray. Oh gracious God, we thank and praise you, Lord. Thank you, Lord, that you will reveal yourself through your word, God. We thank you, God, for the grace you have kept, God, and how we are to live our life. Father God, that you may speak to us through your word today. In Jesus Christ Almighty name. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. One more time, let's lift our hands and let's give a glory and honor to God Almighty. The word of God says, the one who, how God has their God, they are blessed people. The God who we are worshiping is a living Almighty God. How God sees, says that he is the God who sees me. Our God who we worship, he can see you. Into Esachia, the Lord said, "I heard your prayer." The Lord who we worship, he can hear you. From Genesis to the revelation that we can see God who is speaking always. The God who we are worshiping, he can speak also. The Bible says, when Noah offered a sacrifice, God, God, God accepted the sacrifice. The Lord who can smell. The woman who was bleeding for Tholeus, who she came and touched the garment of the Lord Jesus, she said, "Who touched me?" The Lord who we are worshiping, he can have the feeling over you. What do I say this? The reason I'm saying we are not worshiping an idol, we are not worshiping a stone. We are worshiping the living Almighty God. Hallelujah. Well, how we are to live, the step that has been kept, how we need to live. The Lord came down and he said that stuff for us. You know, the importance of godly manner. Whoever they want, they can come to the Lord Jesus. He might be a very worst sinner, but he can come to the Lord Jesus. But after he come, there is, there are, the pattern, the Lord Jesus Christ, he has kept for that worst sinner or a best sinner. They have to live in such a manner. There is no life that has been better life that has been lived on the earth like our Lord Jesus Christ. Hebrew chapter 12, verse 1, it says, the one who is starting the faith and one who is accomplishing, that is our Lord Jesus Christ himself. There's a lot of pattern, our Lord Jesus Christ, he has been kept for his children. That, in that, there is something special. We're going to turn our Bible to John, chapter 19. I'm going to take you to John, chapter 19. I'm going to describe about five important points, then we will finish today's, this meeting. May the Lord, God Almighty, speak to us through that step. When our Lord Jesus Christ, he was betrayed and he was brought in front of Pilate. We know very well, there is lot of, lot of accusation, false accusation was kept over our Lord Jesus. It was, you know, the end portion of his life was a very difficult time on, among that thirty-three and a half years of our Lord Jesus Christ. I mean, the people, those who are very good, when it's a tough situation comes, they will go away from, you know, their belief. Today, I'm going to describe to you, in that difficult situation, how did our Lord Jesus Christ, he handle his situation? There are a lot of people, they have been fell in their difficult situation, but I'm going to show it to you, how you can overcome that falling, falling, the situation through our Lord Jesus Christ. First of all, we need to, we need to accept the love of our Lord Jesus. Amen. To transform us like him and he become like us on the earth. If it is true that he has become like us, then it is true that he will transform you like him also. How many of you believe that you can shout amen? In this difficult situation of our Lord Jesus Christ, the first pattern we need to understand. He was so strong in his lifestyle. In John, Gospel of John, chapter 19, verse nine. It says, when, when again, Pilate went again into the judgment hall and say it unto Jesus, "When do it come?" But Jesus give him no answer. The next word, Pilate, he is saying that if I, if I want, if I wish, I can deliver you from this. Pilate, he is giving an offer to the Lord Jesus Christ. I have an authority to deliver you from this situation. But Jesus was kept quiet himself. Jesus did not ask anything from Pilate in that situation. We know very well that what has happened the previous night. In the garden of Gethsemane. Our Lord Jesus Christ. He was praying for the particular. The word of God is so clearly saying about this particular incident, our Lord Jesus Christ, he is bitterly crying to the heavenly Father. He has come for this situation. But, but, but again, he is praying to the heavenly Father for this situation to go away. And he said, "If this cup go away from me, let it go away." He has asked three times to the heavenly Father. As he was praying, the word of God says, his shooting become like a blood. The medical doctors, they are describing, if the blood need to come out like a shooting, that the blood pressure need to be so top, it should be so strong in the body, then the small nerves that will start to break down. That's the way the blood will come out like a shooting. Jesus went through that much pain and praying to the heavenly Father, "Let this cup, if it is your will, let this cup be taken away." He prayed for three times. But on the third time, when he prayed, there was no answer came. But instead of that, there is an angel came from heaven and the angel comforted him. Jews, they have a format of prayer. They won't ask for anything more than three times when they pray. When they pray for anything, they will pray for three times and if they don't get it, Jews, they will say it is not a will of God. Saint Paul, he writes in the book of his apostle, he says, he asked to the Lord if this thorn had been taken. And he says, three times he prayed and he did not pray. But the Lord said to Saint Paul, "My grace is sufficient for you." Amen. That means, let that thorn be upon, with you. Saint Paul, he has just left it as a will of God. Amen. Our Lord Jesus Christ, he asked to the heavenly Father. Our heavenly Father did not even give an answer. Yesterday, when he was praying in the garden of Gethsemane, the same matter. The same matter, Pilate is offering to the Lord Jesus. But Jesus Christ, he was not ready to accept the offer of Pilate, but he was kept quiet. You know what he is showing to us? Amen. I won't ask the things I asked my heavenly Father to, from Pilate. Our Lord Jesus Christ, he is showing that what I asked my heavenly Father, I will never ask from any human on the earth. Come on, shout, hallelujah. Amen. This assurance every Christian must have. You must have the assurance that what you ask from your heavenly Father, if it is not happening, you will not go and ask anybody, but the heaven will respond for you. When the Lord Jesus Christ, he was teaching us how to pray, he said, "Roman, our Father do it in heaven." How many of you believe that you have a heavenly Father who is in heaven? Oh, you are not orphaned. I have a heavenly Father who can do everything for me. Amen. Jesus Christ, our Lord, he is crying and he is, he is weeping and he is asking for the same matter. But the same answer that is coming from Pilate, Jesus is kept quiet. We can see in many saints of God in the Bible, the same incident that has been took place. When Abraham, he was coming after the big war that has been took place with big, four kings. Now, the king of Zodome, he is bringing lot of treasure to Abraham. As he was giving that offer to Abraham. Oh, the king of Zodome, he thought Abraham lifted his hand to take that offer he was giving. But instead of Abraham lifting his hand like this, he lifted his hands up. Those who have a pattern of lifting your hands straight up, you will never have the pattern to lift your hands in somebody. Because Abraham, he had an assurance, one who called him. Abraham had lot of needs. Abraham had lot of things to be determined. But even though he was not lifting his hands to anybody. He always lifted his hands towards the heavenly Father. When Abraham is lifting his hands up towards heaven, God cannot rest there. The same night, God came and he spoke to Abraham. Oh, the Lord said, "I am assurance to you and a mighty power to you." "I am your shield and your very great reward." Amen. The Lord said, "I am shield and your great reward." Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Then Abraham was asking to the Lord, "What you're going to give me?" Amen. Our debate is different. Whatever I want asked to the, to God, that is different. But the same debate, I will not do with anybody else. Oh, he is a beloved to the heavenly Father. The Lord never kept any, any lock in the life of Abraham. The Bible says, God has blessed in every, every area of Abraham. We are worshiping the living Almighty God. We sang a song, what a beautiful name it is. What a wonderful name it is. What a wonderful name it is. We have sang that there is no other name like our Lord Jesus. Oh, if you have such a name that the Lord, God Almighty. You must have an assurance inside of your heart. You should have a spiritual pattern that whatever you ask your heavenly Father, you will never open to anybody else. Oh, in the evening, in the name of Jesus, I want to declare over you. What do I ask in prayer, do not convey to anybody or do not ask to anybody, but definitely God will answer your prayer. You know what God said to the church of Pithelapiya? You got a little strength. But you did not deny me. I am telling you. I have kept an open door for you. I will show that how much I love you, the Lord said to Pithelapiya. I am going to show in front of everybody how much I love you. This is what God will do one who has an assurance with the Lord God Almighty. The Lord said about Hannah. The Hannah, she did not have a child. The Bible says, she was always crying. She was always crying. But there is another, uh, the one called Benina. Always she was accusing to her sister. But, but the husband Elkanah, he was saying lot of comforting words. But all the, all the comforting words from the husband, it was not wiping the tears. Whenever, you know, you know, when Hannah will cry, when she know that husband is going to come, that's the time she will cry. Some, some wives, they have that kind of grace. They will be always quiet, but when the husband comes, they will cry. Oh, when the, when they come to know the husband is about to come, then they will start to cry. Now the husband also trying to say many other things to comfort her. Oh, please understand that all the words of Elkanah, it was not wiping the tears of Hannah. But, but you know, the reason is Elkanah's, his word has a comfort power, but it did not have a life. There are many time we will go to the people for comfortment. We will get people's comfort. But people's word doesn't have a life, so that it will not wipe your tears away. Now I am going to say somebody's word to you. His word is not just comfort. His word is a living word, it is a spirit and it is a life. Hannah, she decided. Oh, it's not, it's not going to take place, anything crying in the house. But she got up and she went to the house of God. She decided that my crying enough in front of people. Now she went to the house of God and she started to cry there. The Bible says, all her pain gone out of her heart, then she cried there in the temple. There is much difference that you cry in front of people and in front of God. Oh, when you pray with the people, people can join you and they can also cry. Or they can bring a tissue paper and they can wipe away your tears. Ah, some people will say, are you crying for these silly things and they can walk away. But when you cry in front of your God. He will not just a God who wipe your tears. But he is gathering all your tears in his vessels. That's why the Bible says, one who sow with tears, he will reap it plentiful. Oh, early the priest doesn't know why Hannah is crying. But through the priest early, the word of God. You know what the word of God says? First Psalm chapter eighteen. Then she was not at all with a sad face. See, she was not conceived the next day of her crying in the, in the church. But the Bible says, as soon as she started to cry in the church, she was now no more sad. You know what is the meaning of it? I have cried in the presence of God. Then again, I will not cry in front of people. I have, I have poured out my heart in front of God. But whatever happened, whatever people say, I will never cry in front of people, that's what she decided. Our tears has a much value, my beloved. We must bring our tears in the right place. When our Lord is telling the, the, um, the sowing, uh, parable. That is what, you know, your tears also, it's like a seed you are sowing. There are some tear seed that has been fell on the wayside. As soon as that seed fell on the wayside, the birds came and they took away. Amen, if you cry to somebody, you know bitterly you cry and they will ask, what is the next matter? But they won't take your pain into their life. Now Joseph, he is, Joseph, he is crying in, in the, the, in, in the world and he is crying to the brothers, please rescue me. You know what the Bible says? All the brothers, they were feasting and they were eating. We can understand they did with an angry, but even though the brother was crying and crying, rescue me, rescue me, but they all were eating. If you see in the later days. When Joseph, he wanted to cry in the palace, but he closed the door and he cried alone. But Joseph understood where there is no valley for my tears, I will not bring my tears. If you go and cry to somebody, they will never bother you. It is like a seed that has been fell on the wayside. As soon as your tears fall, there is no valley for it. Don't disvalve your tears, my boy. Jesus, he cried before the heavenly father. He did not cry before Pilate. It's like he denied the heavenly father if he cried in front of Pilate. There is no shame for you if your child is hungry, go and asking to your neighbor, instead of asking you, there is no shame. Our heavenly father, he is richest of richnessness. There are some seed that has been fall in the wayside. That's the way our tears are in front of some people. Some seed that fell on the, um, the, the stony ground. As soon as the, the seed fell, it started to grow. When we go and cry in front of some people, they will tell us, is it? Like that, like they are responding. Then after they say, is it? Then they forget about you. Now in, in, uh, in Yavir's house, everybody was crying. Now, uh, the, the daughter of him was, Jairus was, uh, the daughter of Jairus was dead, they all were crying. When Jesus came to the house of Jairus, everybody was crying there. Jesus said, she did not die, but she is sleeping. Now, as soon as they were crying, as they heard the word, they started to laugh. But Jairus, he did not laugh. The, the, the wife of Jairus did not laugh. All others around, they were laughing. But why they did not, Jairus and the wife did not laugh, because their pain is a real pain. All other pain is just a temporary pain. Some seed that has been fall into the, the stony ground. If you are in some problem, there are many people, they will say, whatever issue have, you call me, I will ready to help you. But they will be there, but you do not know why they are there. One day or two days, it's okay, but after that, they won't help you. Some seed that has been fell on the stony ground. Why I am telling all these things, you ought to be very careful about your tears, you should not waste your tears. Some seed that has been fell into the stony ground. When we cry about our problem to somebody, that's, that somebody will come and share their problem to you. Now we will tell to somebody, my hand is praying. They will say, I don't have the hand itself. This is like a seed that has been fell into the stony ground. I, I was like, I, with a problem, I go to somebody to borrow about some ten thousand euro and they will, they will cry in front of me and I have to empty my pocket and give to them, it's like that. But some seed. It fell in the good ground. Oh, if you can see the word of God, whoever cried in the presence of Almighty, they all had a victorious life. Um, Jacob, he, he could not face his brother, I, uh, Esau. But he go, went and cried in the presence of God. Now the next day, he could able to face his brother. Oh, the Bible says, even though you walk through the valley of shadow, but you will fear. You will renew your stern and you will mount up like eagle's wings. That's what the Lord Jesus Christ, he cried in the garden of Gethsemane, but the, the angel came and comforted and strengthened him. You must have the, the, the pattern that whatever you ask from the father in heaven, you should not ask to anybody. In the, in the testing of your Christian life, this all will come to test you. In the, in the word of God, you can see the woman called. In second Kings chapter four, there we can see. Uh, in one time, the son of her was dead. Now, the, the room sees, they built for Aleisha. She, uh, but Aleisha, he, he, she kept the boy in the bed and she went to see Aleisha. Now, the, the desire of her, she should go to Aleisha and look at him and cry about this matter. Now Aleisha, he saw that she is coming from far distance. Now Aleisha, he said to his servant, go and ask her, is she okay? And just inquire about her. In verse twenty six, it says. The word of God says, run now, I pray thee, to meet her and say unto her, is it well with thee? Is it well with thy husband? Is it well with that child? And she answered, it is well. And when she came to the man of God, to the hill, she caught him by the feet. Now she is coming to open a matter to Aleisha. She did not open that matter to the servant of Aleisha. The husband doesn't know this matter. Even the servant of Aleisha doesn't know this matter. She knows that very well, if I open this matter to anybody else, they will also will be sad. But if I open this matter to the prophet, then my, my sadness will turn into joy. There is much difference that, you know, our, our, our pain that we share to the people and to share to our heavenly father. When we share our pain to the people, they, it will become a pain for them also. But when we bring our pain to the heavenly father by his grace, our sadness will turn into joy. Our Lord Jesus Christ, he are an assurance in this matter. Whatever the way Pilate, he was asking. I am a king, I can deliver you, he is offering. But you know what Jesus was so assured? He was so sure that if my father is not giving, I do not want from anybody. Oh, the pastor's, the father, he always says one word. Whatever God gives, that is enough for me. Whatever God doesn't give, I do not need that. If you have that mindset, then you will have a mind of enough. She was so strong. Second point. He was very clear about it. You know what is clear? In John chapter nineteen. For ten and eleven words, it says like that. Verse from ten, it says, then said Pilate unto him, speak thou not unto me, knowest thou not that I have power to crucify thee, or I have power to release thee. Jesus answered, though could, they, they, though could not have power at all against me, except it has been given from, from above. Therefore he that delivered me unto thee hath the greater sin. You know what our Lord Jesus Christ says here? Without the knowledge of God, without the permission of God, nothing will happen in our life. When Pilate with his authority, he was offering that. Jesus Christ, he was talking to him about the power of the heavenly father. Jesus had that, that kind of clearance over that matter. Without the permission of God in my life, even the devil cannot touch my shadow. There is no way the devil touch your shadow without permission of your heavenly father. Oh, Jesus Christ, he himself said to the disabled. For one coin, there is a two birds that has been said. For two coin, there is five birds has been said. Oh, that means if it is one coin, two birds, if it is, uh, two coin, it's supposed to be four, but he asks, he says five, that means one is free. Oh, the Lord Jesus Christ, he says, whatever you look at that, even it's less value, even that will never happen in your life without the permission of heavenly father. You know what is that mean? When that bird that flies. Do you know how many, uh? Hunters, they will keep an eye over the bird to hunt. You know how, how many arrows? You know how, how many arrows that will be point to that bird? The Lord said, who overcomes against you? If her father had a desire that bird need to fly, it will definitely fly. When the, the heavenly Father, he desired that bird need to fall down, then only the bird will fall down. As the Lord says like that, then the Lord says that all your hair in your head has been counted. When our Lord desired that your hair must fall, then only your hair will fall down. We must have an assurance without the permission, without the knowledge of God, there will be nothing happen in our life. Oh, in the life of Job, we know that, that, the, the devil, he was tempting him so much. First thing, he has touched his wealth. Oh, that he heard the treasure, everything is gone away. His target, the devil's target is that he must deny the God. He is fighting and he is destroying everything that is belongs to Job. You know what Job said? We can ask the testimony of Job. Job will say. The Lord has given. God has taken away. You know, in his testimony of Job, he even never brought devil also in his testimony. But when we have a little bit headache, ten minutes we will take and we will talk about the devil only. That's why the devil enjoy the testimony time in the church. Oh man, we will talk nine minutes about the devil, but the last one minute will say, God heal me, that's the one minute we will give for God. The Lord is asking to the devil, where you are coming from? The law, the devil is telling, I'm coming around, I have seen all the earth and I'm coming. Oh, the, the, the law, the law, the Lord asked, did you kept your eye over my servant Job? Oh man, the devil did not open the matter of, of the, the Job, but God himself opened the matter of his servant Job. You know what the devil is telling? Oh, the devil is telling, I, I cannot, I'm going around the world, but I'm not able to see Job. But the reason is that you have a, a boundary over your servant Job, I cannot see him. You, do you know? The Bible says, those who dole under the shadow of the Almighty, they will dole homage. Oh, he has destroyed the, the inner earth. But he cannot touch one who is under the shadow of Almighty. Even he cannot touch the, the grass of the house of Job. Do you know why, what he is demanding from God? Oh man, he is demanding you touch him. God is telling to devil. Now God is telling to the devil, I will bring my boundaries so narrow. Now the Lord is telling, all that belongs to Job is belongs to you. Everything belongs to Job, it is all in your hands, the law says. Now God just opened up little bit boundary of Job. The devil went in and he destroyed everything. But the law said, he, you have no permission to touch Job. Now all the boundaries around Job. All the wealth belongs to Job, everything is gone away. Job is telling, God has given, God taken away. Do you know how he says that? He was worshiping God and he is conveying that matter. He was worshiping and he is telling that. If you have that assurance, whatever you lose, you will have a victory, my beloved. Oh, you will worship even you lost things in your life. Again, the devil went to into the presence of Almighty. Now again, the Lord himself is opening the matter of Job. If Job knows that the Lord opened the matter of Job to the devil. That Job might said to God, why you open up the matter about me to the devil? Again, the Lord is opening the matter about Job to devil. Now the, the, the devil is telling to God, you have given him very good health. He is worshiping again because he lost everything, he is worshiping again because he has a health, he is have assurance that he can earn everything. And the Lord given up permission to the devil, he can touch his health also. Now the Lord said to devil, the job is in your hand, as God lifted Job and hand out to devil. Now as God is handing over devil to, uh, uh, Job to devil, he has put a condition over there. You can never, you have no permission to touch his life. Do you know whose hand Job is? The hands of the devil. But do you know who, who is controlling the life of Job? God himself is controlling his life. Oh man, God will give in the hands of your enemy. But God will not allow that enemy. Come on, clap your hand and appreciate the Lord. The Lord said, you have no permission to touch his life. Do you know what it is? It's like you open up a, a banana. As you give one into the hands of the monkey. It's like you are telling to the monkey, don't eat that. It is not a temptation to the banana, but it's a temptation to the monkey. It is not a temptation to Job, it is a temptation to the devil. Because Job had that assurance. Even though he was in the hands of the devil. Do you know what he is saying? Oh, whatever that God has kept, he is able to accomplish that from me, he said. Oh, if you ask Job, how can you know that God is going to accomplish? Oh, I know very well, my Savior, he alive, Job said. Oh, this is a, this is a revelation, the Lord Jesus Christ is giving. Whatever the power any king has. Unless my heavenly Father give permission, nothing will happen. Come on, shout amen to the Lord. There is no other power, greater power than our heavenly Father. He is able to do everything in our life. After understanding, Job could able to tell, very well, Lord, you are able to do everything. Job said, whatever you want to do in my life, no way it can be stopped. We must have this revelation. Oh, is there something God has permitted in your life? You do you know, you have to understand why God permitted? We must have that revelation. Oh, when, when you have everything, just enjoy all that. But when you are down, you think about that way you are going through. You should think and ask the Lord, why, why is happening? There is a two temptation that has been said in the book of James. There is one temptation that God permits. There is another temptation that comes because of our lifestyle. We should, we, we, we will have a question, how, how can I understand the temptation? In the midst of that, James chapter one, verse five, it is written. It says, if any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God, that giventh unto all man liberally and abraden not, and it shall be given to him. We will take and we will quote this word just for a education purpose. Do you know where this word is written? It's written in the middle of two temptations. In one, one word he says, one who has a patient of his temptation. In one, uh, chapter one, verse twelve, he says. Verse thirteen, he says, let no man say that when he is tempted, I am tempted of God. Oh, you can have a question, what is this Lord, I don't understand. You can, you can, you can have a question, is it because of my lifestyle it has come, or it is from God, you will have that question. That's why God says, are you locked for the wisdom, you come to me? Do you know what, what to ask? You must ask to heavenly Father. How this temptation come, why this came? The Lord says, why this problem come, why this happening, you ask me, I will not rebuke you, but I will explain you. We, many of the time, we must have this kind of wisdom. That's why our Lord Jesus Christ, he had this kind of wisdom. You know, when they come, come to arrest our Lord Jesus Christ, what does he say? He said very clearly, this is your time. This is your time. Do you know how he is looking at his, his death? In John chapter nine, thirteen, verse one. It says that he, his time has come to the heavenly Father. There is no death worse, worse than the death of the Lord Jesus Christ. There is lot of death situation on the earth, but there is no death worse than our Lord Jesus. Do you know how the Lord is looking at that worst death situation? I am, because I'm going to the heavenly Father. A child of God, you will see your death in that way. You will see in that way. Oh man, even though our death is a sad situation, but one who finishes rise in the Lord, they will look at their death as a victorious journey. Our Lord, he had this, this assurance. He was not, he, he was, he was not unshetted be, before other powers. He did not had any disbelief or complaint, I was under the shadow of Almighty, they came and touched, he did not had any, any doubt at all. That's what the Lord Jesus Christ says, says, unless it's given from the heavenly Father, you have no power. Our dear beloved brothers and sisters. Do you know, without your knowledge, God has rescued you from many death situations? Do you know God has rescued you from many sickness situations? Jacob, uh, Jacob, he doesn't know the love and he is coming to do something bad for him. But God knows it. But God stopped him. Do you know how many things God has stopped in your life? You know what is your testimony, you met an accident, then you escaped, that will be your testimony. Are you thinking how many time God protected you without meeting an accident, are you thinking about that? Oh, David, he says, he pushed me for me to fall down. But God has helped me not to fall down. But when my, my leg, it is about to fall, but, but the grace of God is abundant. If something happened without your knowledge in your life, you must understand, God is doing with a reason in your life. Those who love the Lord, he will not be, feel about anything, he will not worry about that. Oh man, the Bible's, uh, it's chapter eight.
Eight, eight twenty eight.
The Bible says, Roman chapter eight, verse twenty eight, we know that all things work for, together for good, for them those who love God, to them who are called according to his purpose. I would like to share the third point to you. His, hi, his submission. In Jo, John chapter nineteen, verse, verse seventeen. He carried his cross and he walked. He himself carried his cross and he walked. He did not do that without any other way. The Lord said, I came for this. This is a will of my heavenly Father. He cried and he prayed, if this cup taken away from me. Do you know how he finished that prayer? He prays that it's not my will. But your will to be done. But your will to be done. That is what our Lord is teaching us for the prayer, what the will, how the will of the Father that is been done in heaven, as it is may be done on the earth also. There are lot of places, the Bible tells us, he is went away, he hidden himself. If our Lord wanted to do, he himself, he can hide it from this situation. But he is giving his shoulder to carry that cross. Do you know what is a submission, my beloved? He will have a desire to fulfill the will of the Father. Oh, us, Jesus went little bit away, he, he is not able to carry and they making Simon to carry that cross. In Matthew chapter twenty seven, verse thirty two, he says. It says, they have forced a man they found called Simon and they forced him to carry the cross. Simon, he is carrying because there is no way by force he is carrying it. It will be the, if you take a picture of both of them carrying the cross, it will be similar. Oh man, everything will look like a similar. There is one, he is doing with willingness. The one, the another one, without another way, by force he is doing it. The people who pray, they will do with willingness and some people, there is no other way, by force they will do it. Oh, some of the parents, they will make children to fear in such a way. And they will ask their children, do you know tomorrow is a max exam, did you pray? Then they will, they will put a fear over the child, if you don't pray, you will not get the result, and the child will start to pray. Then with a fear, the child will get up and pray. This prayer is not a willing. This prayer is not a willingness. There is no way, that's the way the child is praying. The reading word of God, there are people who does with willingness and the people who does without, without desire. Oh, when, some people, when they have the bad dream, they will say, as soon as, they will say, get the Bible in my hand. Twenty, in twenty, twenty years, there are people who does not read the Bible, they started to read the Bible. You know, the reason is because the COVID was knocking. Oh, because the COVID was knocking at their life, they started to turn to God. And you can see, Psalm ninety-one in the Bible, it will be very much they have read in that page. Even if they wash their hands, they will say, there will be no, no evil will befall your tent. Oh, they are not doing with a desire, but there is no way, that's the way they are doing it. There are many people who does things with willingness and there are many people without willingness that does. The Lord Jesus Christ, he says. The Lord who says, the Lord Jesus, he says, if one who wanted to follow me. If you are willing to follow me, you carry your cross, that's what he says. If you are not having a desire to follow me, you go away. Oh, you should do God's ministry with a willingness, but you should not do God's ministry by force or no other way. Moses, he is telling in his house, you know, the circumcision is done according to the Jews' culture. But, uh, the, the wife is telling, no, it should not be done. Oh, the, 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 the Bible says, the Lord is about to kill Moses. The next day, he just submitted his life to the Lord. It is not with a willingness. There is no way with a fear. Some people, if we ask, you know, how we are so passionate in the church, are you doing, how we are doing it that, then they will say, no other way, you know, God will tempt me, I have to go through a lot of difficult situations. I thank God for those who are giving hand and working in this church. I can see there are a lot of people who stood in the entrance and up to the stage. I, I praise God for all the musicians, all the worship leaders. I praise God for all the ashes. But I want to ask you a question. Are you doing with, with willingness, are you doing by instruction? Amen. If you do with a willingness, my beloved. The Bible says, even you give a cup of water with a willingness heart, there is a reward from heaven for you. You know, whatever you do for God, if you do it with willingness, that is a real love of God. You must do it with willingness. Anything you do for God, you must have a desire, you must have a willingness heart. When God was talking to Moses about the building the temple, he is telling one who is willingly giving, then you accept from them. Do you know, uh, the Lord Jesus Christ, he was asking to Peter after, after the resurrection? Jesus asked, are you loving me, Peter? After he said yes to the Lord. He shall, he shall lead my sheeps. God, God did not force Peter. He did not force Peter. There are a lot of people who does things, there is no other way, by force they are doing for God. But this Simon, he did, there is no way by force he was carrying the cross. But even though by force he carried the cross, even though God bless his generation. The, the Bible says, the, 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 the child of, uh, Simon, Alexander Ruppers, the Lord blessed him in the land. By, even by force, somebody does something for God, even God blessed their generation, how much God will bless one who is doing things for God with willingness? My beloved people. Which our fellowship, God is keeping you. You must do, you must engage with some responsibility in that church. Which our church we are belongs to, we are the body of that church. You must ask the Lord, what, what you want me to do, even if you are lifting a chair, you must do with happiness. By the grace of God in our church, there are a lot of volunteers in the church of our pastor's church. In the initial stage of our father's ministry, uh, when few people, we have five children in the house. Oh, from the toilet cleaning and putting a mat, chair, everything, setting the music, everything was done by the children of the pastor. But we were, we were not murmuring with a joyful heart, we were doing for God. But if we can see the child, the, all the children of my father, almost everybody was highly blessed. But now today to do everything, there are a lot of people in our church. Anything you do with a willingness heart, heaven will look at that and God will strengthen you to do continuously and God will bless you. If you involve in any kind of ministry for God, don't do it by force or by instruction, but do it with a desire of your heart. The Lord will definitely bless you, my beloved. I shout amen to the Lord. I'm going to share two more things than we will pray. Fourth point. Whatever he need to do, he did it in, in fast. In John chapter nineteen, verse twenty-eight, he says. After this, Jesus knowing that all things were now accomplished, that the scripture might be fulfilled, saith, I, I am thirst. The Lord knows that he is going to die in, in, in very soon. He knows that after his, that the next second, he will go to the Heavenly Father. But he, he knows that very well, that he will be little while on the earth. He is looking, what else I can do on this little while I'm on this earth, that's what he is looking. He is looking, uh, you know, what else can be accomplished and there is one more word of God, prophecy need to be accomplished. After that has been accomplished only that, that, the, the light need to be shut. You need to understand very well. Those who fail on this earth, they have no place in heaven. Who are, you are a best person on the earth. But if you have a victorious life, then only you will have a place in heaven. That's why if we are, if we are looking under the revelations, chapter two, there you can say, those who have a victory, it says about all the churches. The Bible says, even he knows almost everything is accomplished, but he is looking again, what else need to be completed, the little while he was on the earth. Oh, my beloved people of God, many of us, we have a journey of successful life, but I want to tell you more than the success, there is a purposeful life. You, you must understand what purpose God has in my life in this earth. You are, you need to have a clear assurance in your life, that what purpose God has in my life in this Ireland. Did Pastor Jacylan never, you know, he ever thought that he will have a church in Ireland? He came to this land to, to do his job. But after he understand the will of God, that he submitted himself. The Lord has blessed this church and he is. There are many people you are like that. Why God brought you from another country to this nation? Do you know the purpose of God behind that? We must understand, my beloved. I have finished my cause. When you run your race and you are about to finish, you should have the assurance that I have run a victorious life. You have a purpose of God in your life. Oh, but unless you complete that victorious life, there is no crown for you. The Lord said, I am the resurrection and life. If Jesus has a desire, he can give his life anytime. He says that I am the one who has the power to kill and resurrect. But the Bible says, unless and until everything is accomplished over his life, he will hang on the cross. Oh, the pain is so much increasing. He was so clear that when I die and when I go to my father in heaven, he, my father should not say that one thing you did not complete, hear that revelation. My beloved people of God, there, for everything, there is a season. For a birth, there is a season, for the death, there is a season. Oh, in the midst of this too, our life is there. Why God is making you to leave in the midst of this too? You know how much of the death situation God has rescued you and protected you? Why, you know? You should understand what is a purpose of God in my life. Paul, he run his race without purpose. He thought he is running for a good. Saint Paul, he was topping everything. As he thought, that, that's why he did not have any fear and he was running very fast. As he was, had a journey towards Damascus, he fell suddenly. The Lord is, the Lord Jesus Christ is asking, why are you persecuting me? Do you know what is the reason? Do you know the reason behind that? If you, if you run your track in the, in the other way, that means you are making the Lord to have a pain. Oh, the Bible says, Saint Paul, he was not accused according to the law. That means, Saint Paul, he did not do any mistakes according to law. He says, Saint Paul, he accomplished all that ten commandments in his life. Even though he was accomplished all the ten commandments, the Lord Jesus asking, why are you persecuting me? Do you know why the Lord asked? In his side, he was right. He did not submit and surrender his life for the will of the Father. Saint Paul, he asked only two question to God. These two question, we all need to ask. First question. You must ask God who you are. Who you are. Jesus said, though God who we are persecuting, I am Jesus. He understood who is Jesus. The next question he is asking. He asked, what do you want me to do, Lord? Well, people wanted to have a success in their life, they will come to God and they will ask, what you will do for me? But the people who wanted to have their life purposefully, they will come to God and ask, what you want me to do? There are a lot of people who will ask God, what you will do for me? But a lot of people will come to God, what you want me to do, only few people will ask. Do you know what is the difference between the big crowd and the small crowd? But a lot of people who cannot say things, but the small people, they can say things of God. And they are able to say and they will say the statement, I have run a victorious life. Saint Paul, he says, I'm, I'm not running a race without an assurance. In Galatians chapter two, verse, uh, chapter two.
Twenty-one.
Verse twenty-one, he says, I will not, I will not waste the grace of God. In Ephesians chapter three, verse two, he says, um, if you have heard of the, uh, this, this, this dispensation of the grace of God, which is given me to. The grace is given for us, for us to be rescued. It is not just for us, the grace has been given. Because for others to be rescued, God has given a grace in our life. Amen, the, the grace God has given for us, we are rescued. The grace that has been given in our life concerning others, for how many people we have shared the hospital, for how many people we are bringing God to their life. In Philippians chapter, uh, chapter one, verse twenty-four and twenty-five. He says at, uh, twenty-five and twenty, twenty-four and twenty-five, nevertheless, to abide in the flesh is more needful for you. And having this confidence, I know that I shall abide, continue with you all for your, your furthermore and joy of. Hey, each one of us, we must keep this word in our heart. We know that, you know, the one who got saved, when we depart from this, uh, body, we will go to God. You know, even after you got saved, why God is keeping you on this earth? Because God wanted to do something through you to somebody. Saint Paul, he says, because of that grace God has given me, I will not deny that grace. Amen, you must understand wherever God takes you, how, how, you should have a revelation, without the, without the reason, God will not take you anywhere. You should have a, a, a clear understanding, while you are living only, you can do anything for God. God, Jesus, he asked for something to do and he is asking to Peter. Do you know what he is telling? After you have been strengthened, you strengthen your brothers. Because Jesus knows Peter is going through bigger, weaker, weaker position and temptation. That, that, by understanding that Jesus is telling to Peter. Jesus is telling to Peter, Peter, I prayed for you. He will, he will escape from this. After he escaped from this. There is a lot of people, they are going through a temptation like you, you must help them to escape from that also. Amen, this, this job has been given for Peter to be accomplished even by God. Peter was doing many other things. When Peter was so old, this project has came in his mind. Second Peter, chapter one, verse thirteen and fourteen, Peter, he says like this. One, second Peter, chapter one, verse thirteen and fourteen. Thirteen and fourteen. Second Peter. Second Peter. Yeah, I think to meet, as long as I am in the tabernacle, to stir up, stir you up by putting you in remembrance, knowing that shortly I must put off this, this my tabernacle. Even as our Lord Jesus Christ has showed me. You have to understand, this, this letter has been written for the people, those who went astray. When Stephen, he died, the many people, they went astray. Now, all the people who are. Who are going through su- situation like that, this job has been given to Peter. Peter was doing many other things except doing this strengthening. Now Peter is seeing, I'm going to be a little while on the earth. The Lord told me to do something then. Now he is writing in his old age. As long as I am in this body only, I can do this strengthening. My beloved brothers and sisters. If God want you to do something in this nation of Ireland, as long as you are in this nation of Ireland only, you can able to do that. That's why we need to be in the presence of God to understand what is a purpose concerning you in this land. How do you understand the purpose of God? Paul, he asks, what, what is your willingness, Lord? Now there is a direct conversation between the Lord Jesus and Paul. The Lord had every, every conversation here. Oh, when Paul was asking, what do you want me to do, he should have given the straight answer. But the Lord did not give an answer, straight answer, he said, go to Damascus, I will tell you there. You know what, what, he went to Damascus and what did he do? He was praying. He was fasting and praying for three days there. Without doing that, God should have told him. But to understand the will of God, you must go in the presence of God and pray and be waiting in the presence of God. Oh, you, you, you know, our problem is as soon as you, you hear the sermon, you will come to the preacher and you want to know the will of God. Each one of us, we have been eating all the fast food, take away and we become everything fast. Everything need to happen fast and you need to go fast away. You must come to the presence of God patiently and pray and understand the will of God. Paul, he was waited three days. The, the, the word of God, he says, Paul has seen a vision about the will of God when he was praying. You have to understand what is a purpose concerning me on this earth. You must ask to the God only one thing. Come on, my beloved brothers and sisters, ask the Lord, without fulfilling everything concerning me, don't take away. Lord, when you are taking me, that, that time, I should have an assurance, I had a victorious race. You must have an assurance, you run a victorious life. You kept the faith. You should have an assurance, God is keeping a crown for you. One who has this assurance, he will look at the death and he will say, where is the, where is the power of death and where is the head is, and he will say it with louder. When you are about to finish your running, your race or your life on this earth, you will not be panic. Pastor has said about the, the, the father of pastor. Pastor said that my pastor's father, he, he grown in the, uh, not saved from the Hindu background. He accepted the Lord Jesus Christ at the age of nineteen. After he accept the Lord Jesus Christ, he fully submitted and surrendered his life to the Lord. He submitted his life for God's ministry and he, he was desirefully doing a God ministry. God has given a wife and God blessed with five children. In that, I am the second one. In, in the year of twenty, uh, two thousand sixteen. In, uh, tw- twenty first of November. My father becomes so sick in the afternoon time. He was so breathless that time. That moment, my father called me near to him. My father, he was breathless, but he is telling me, there is somebody who is sick in the hospital, go and pray for that person. As he, pastor went to pray for, for the person in the hospital. Then I am suddenly, I am getting a phone call from my house, saying that daddy is very sick and he is. When I came to the house, my father was so breathless and he is so much difficult. Then my father was telling me, go to the toilet and fill the water, hot water in the bucket. I do not know why my father is telling that. I was just massaging his chest. My daddy was forcing me to go to the toilet and fill the hot water. There is two more, two or three people from my church came. I went to the toilet and filling the water in the bucket. Then my father said, take me to the toilet and keep me inside the bucket. In the. Beside, beside the bucket in the chair. Then my daddy said, give me a bath. I was asking my daddy, why, why? My daddy said, whatever I say, just do it. I thought maybe his body is so heat, that's why he is asking him to pour the water. I just took two cup of water, two mug of water and just poured over him. Then my daddy was telling, no, 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 not like that, put a nicely soap and give me a nice bath. I given a soap and put a soap and given a nice bath. Then my daddy said, change my dress now. Then I changed my, uh, his dress. Then he said, just lay me on the bed. Then I was telling my daddy, you're, you're breathless, please sit down and relax. But my daddy said, no, 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 make me lie down on the bed. Then I, I made him lie down on the bed. Then my daddy held in my hand. He was looking at me. He was looking at my mother. He was looking two, three times, me and my mother. Now he was looking under the heaven. When he was looking under the heaven, I can see a glory on his face. As he was looking under the heaven and he left my hand. Now I am, I'm, I'm calling my father, father. My mother also calling, calling him. He was not at all mighty. As he was looking under the heaven, he took the hand and he kept over his chest. The last word he said. He said, I am submitting myself to the will of you, Lord. Then he closed his eyes, that's it. Hallelujah. Hallelujah. Whoever they are mighty man, but in front of the death, they will tremble. There are a lot of mighty man, lot of mighty leaders, because of the death, they, they went and hidden somewhere on the. But I have seen a person who submitted his life to the will of God, I have seen his death. I could not find any fear or any, any trembling on his face. Reason is that we are not saying a story, we are saying the one who overcome the death, my beloved. One who submit their life to the will of the father, he will face your death very joyfully. They will have that assurance that even I finish my race in here, I will be with him in heaven. That's why the Bible says in Psalm hundred and fourteen, it says that I will be, wi- 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 with, walk with the Lord in the, in the, in the midst of the living. My beloved people of God, when God's desire is fulfilling in our life, we will have that assurance. Oh, hallelujah, the Lord has paid the ransom for us to have the eternity in our life. Oh, you need to have a clear understanding. You cannot go to heaven because you got saved. You cannot go to heaven because you took a one of a. You cannot go to heaven because you took a God anointing. Amen, to go to heaven, this is all important. But if you want to go to heaven. You must have a victorious life. You must have a victorious life. The Bible says, one who has a big tree, victorious life, he has everything in heaven. When we come to the salvation, our name has been written in heaven. But the Bible says, if you fail in your life, that name has been, the, the name will be taken away from the book of life. The Bible says, one who has a victory over their life, their, their name will not be plotted out from the book of life. Amen, to write his name, he must have a born again experience. But he will not keep all the names in the book of living, but some name he will plot out. Those who are attending the, finishing the, the education, they will have a hall ticket for the examination. Amen, on the hall ticket, everybody, everybody's number will be there. Not the people from outside the class, but those who attended the class, their number will be there. But when the result come for their examination, those who are given exam, only those who got the victory. Every, everyone in the class will write the exam. But when the result comes, uh, half of the people, their name won't be there. But those who have a victorious life. The Lord Jesus, he is showing to us. Do you know what is the last word? It is finished. He said, it is finished. He said, I could able to complain. That's what Saint Paul, he says, I can do all things through Christ who is strengthening me. That's why God is giving the grace to accomplish. That's why he is giving anointing to accomplish. That's why he is giving strength to accomplish. Oh, when you are weak, God is strengthening to accomplish his will in your life. Oh, amen. Elijah, he was, he, he thought he will finish his running in halfway. But God has strengthened him and he told him, your, your ways are so long and he has strengthened him. Amen, when he has accomplished, then only the, the chariots came to take him. The Bible says that death of his, death of his beloved, it is so precious in the sight of God. My beloved people of God, how many saints of God had the race very victorious? It might be ordinary death in front of others. Some might be died with a sickness. Some might be died in accident. Is there any death worse than the death of the Lord Jesus? Saints of God, they will never think about what kind of death they are going to face, but they will think about after the death, where they are going to sit with the heavenly Father. That's why they says about the Lord Jesus. He has seen the joy in front of him. He did not consider the shame. He, he bear the cross. Oh, pastor is telling, uh, his, his, his daddy died and he could not accept that. I was telling to the Lord, you know, my father should live for more, more years. Oh, father, uh, I was telling to God, my father has doing victorious ministry. About one and a half months, I was asking this question to God. One day, God spoken to me. Hebrews chapter eleven. It says from chapter thirty three, by faith, they have, they had a victorious. In thirty five says. Woman received their dead raised to life again. Was twenty thirty six, he says, others. It says that the second portion of thirty five says, others were taught not accepting deliverance, that they might obtain the better resurrection. When the Lord speaks. Those who do the will of the father. They will not see the temporary. They will be have the assurance of revelation, the resurrection of God. They, they, they say, they will submit to the will of God. Jesus submitted to the will of the father. Saints of God is submitted and surrendered the life to the will of God. Every death of the saints of God, it is there. They will submit. Oh, it, it, it is a, it is a high quality. It is a, it is a high quality. Mighty obtain resurrection, better resurrection. Do you know the reason? Those who united together with the. The Bible says, those who are dead. The Bible says, "Those who are dead in Christ, they will rise up."
Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Jesus, what need to be done, he has done it. One more thing I wanted to say, share, then we will finish it. The fifth thing. He has kept his testimony. John chapter nineteen. Was thirty-five and thirty, thirty-five and thirty-six. Was thirty-five or?
Thirty-five.
And he that saw it bear, bear record and his record is true. Thirty-five.
John nineteen thirty-five.
He that saw it, bear the record and his record is true and he know that he is, he said true, that he might believe. For, for these things were done, that the scripture should be fulfilled, a bone of him shall not be broken. And again, another scripture says, "They shall look on him whom they pierced." Listen very carefully, when Jesus did many miracles, there are lot of people given testimony. There's when, there's lot of good things that take place in our life, there will be a lot of people, they will say about us. But in the difficult situation of a Lord Jesus Christ, one who was observing him, he is giving a testimony concerning him. In difficult situation only, we will just murmur and complain, we will talk many things from our mouth. But here we can see in the difficult situation, Jesus forgiven. He was denied there. But even though he was denied there, he surrendered his spirit into the heavenly Father. Even it was so painful situation. He kept his testimony, my beloved. Oh, those who are seeing to the Lord Jesus. Truly, he is the son of the living God, that testified. Hallelujah. Amen, for you to prove that you are a child of the most high God, you should not do a reckoning. You do not need to walk on the sea. If we keep your testimony well, that is enough. Jesus said, "The people shall see your good things and they will glorify your father in heaven." Jesus kept this stuff for us. The third day, he was resurrected from death. He is sitting into the right hand of the heavenly Father. He is promising us. Those who are victorious. He is promising us, "I am sitting in the right hand of my God and he will also sit with me on the ground." Jesus may give us the grace that we shall fulfill these steps of the Lord Jesus. May the Lord bless you. Thank you, Jesus. Let's all praise God for two minutes.
Thank you, Jesus. Hallelujah.
Hallelujah. Thank you, Jesus. Let's pray that the Lord give me the grace to fulfill your step. Lord, let's pray that, Lord, let me not waste my life. Oh, let's pray that the Lord give me the desire to move in your world. Lord, give me the desire, I will be like a strong like you. Now whatever I ask from you, I should not ask to anybody. Lord, give me the grace, I shall have a clear assurance. Lord, let me have a clear assurance that whatever you will not forbid, that will happen to me. Lord, give me the grace, I should submit my life like you. Lord, I shall do the things of God with a hot desire. Lord, give me the, I should understand the will of God to run a race. Lord, I should understand the will of God to live a life. Lord, it is enough, I wasted my days. Saint Paul, he says, "I will not run without an assurance." Lord, give me the grace with an assurance I will run. Amen, also, come on, pray that the Lord give me the grace that others will see me and they will glorify God. Come on, pray that because of me, let not your name will be real. Your name will be put into shame. Give me, give me the grace to keep my testimony. Oh, man, as we submit ourselves, let's submit ourselves.
I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided to follow Jesus. No turning back, no turning back, no turning back, no turn. The world behind me, the world behind me, the cross before me, the world behind me. The cross before. The cross before. Oh, no turning back, no turning back, no turning back. One more time, I have decided, I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided, Jesus, I have decided. Glory, I surrender, amen, no turning. Lift up your hands and sing, "I surrender all, I surrender all, I surrender all." Tell him, "Here I am to worship you, God," hallelujah, hallelujah. Here I am to worship, here I am to worship. And every worship, in every difficult situation, in every difficult situation, hallelujah, Jesus. Tell him, "Oh, my God, the God of God, hallelujah." Amen, you know how much it costs? Jesus surrendered life for us, hallelujah. He carried everything, he carried all our sin, all our envy, all our temptation, all our failures. He carried on the cross, my beloved, hallelujah. To see, I see, oh, 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 oh. Tell him, "Here I am, my God, hallelujah, hallelujah." Can we submit our life to the Lord? Thinking of this five thoughts and steps, the Lord Jesus, he kept towards the end of his life. My beloved, when everything is well and good, we will have a joyful time. When things are not all right, are we, are we still loving God more than before? Let's keep the Lord in front of us at all time, at all time. Don't take this words, that's a simple way, meditate over it. It is teaching us what is a purpose and plan of God in our life, oh, hallelujah. Let's not the people who, whose name will be plotted out from the book of life. Our name will be kept when we have a victorious Christian life. Let's live a life, a victorious Christian life. It's not your own strength, when you are willing, God's strength is sufficient for you. You will live a victorious Christian life, not based on who you are, but based on who is your God. Let's have that assurance in Jesus' name. We're going to pray now and after the prayer, if, if it's okay for pastor, please, your song, everybody is waiting. So we'll, we'll ask pastor Thiruthuraj to come and pray now. Once he pray, musicians get ready for pastor, his song, that song has been used, oh, so many Tamil church and Malayalam church around the world, it is a very meaningful. And we do not want to live without that song today, amen, hallelujah. So let's get prayed from Pastor Thiruthuraj, let's welcome Pastor Thiruthuraj, come on, clap your hand and appreciate.
Praise the Lord, even I thought that pastor should sing a Ummalagana Kanga, thank you pastor. Acts of the Puzzles, chapter five, nineteen and twenty says like this. "But at night, an angel of the Lord opened the prison doors and brought them out and said, 'Go stand in the temple and speak to the people all the words of this life.'" He may came here in a situation of like a prison, but the word of the Lord came. The Lord has sent his servant with his life-giving word and he has spoken. Prison is broken, amen. The word of God breaks every oak, the anointing breaks every oak. And I know for sure that you are freed indeed. If the word frees you, you are freed indeed and the sun frees you, you are free indeed. You're going in freedom because we heard that God's sovereignty is with you, God's integrity is with you, God's victory is with you, God's loyalty and testimony is with you. You are the testimonies of God, let's pray. Father God, thank you Lord for your precious word, powerful word that is spoken over us, Lord, because there is life in your word, we know that you have done your word. Lord, thank you Lord, every prison is broken today, every bondage is broken today, Lord God. Thank you Lord for the victory that you have given us, Lord, thank you. We pray and praise your name, hallelujah, for all that you have done this night, Lord God. And we pray for your servant, Lord, who has spoken the word of God. And Lord, we know that same word that is in your mouth is as powerful as the word which is in the mouth of your servant, Lord. Thank you, we receive it in Jesus' wonderful name, we pray, amen, 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 praise. Amen, come on, let's welcome pastor John Jason to come forward.
Thank you, Jesus. The
Thank you, pastor. We are so blessed, hallelujah. Let's lift our hands towards pastor John Joyce and almost everyone, the family doing God's ministry. The church is going, growing like a, in a tremendous way. They recently built a building where the church is, but I heard that now, that place is not enough. And they're looking to build another bigger place. That's a blessing of, you know, the prayer of the servant of God, who dedicated his life and the generation who is faithfully standing and God is establishing his glory on the land in Jesus' name. So let's pray for them and the ministry, hallelujah. Father, we pray in the mighty name of Jesus. Father, we bring your servant, Pastor Johnson Joyce, Lord God. Lord, we bring his brother, David Joyce, we bring Lord God, Benson Joyce and everyone in the family into your blessed hand. And all the elders, all the workers, all the ministrations of God. Thank you God, my Lord, for you using them, Lord God, in a glorious way. That the word of God that you are pronouncing from their mouth, that is touching and many people around the world, God, every day. Even that Lord God, every day manna that has been blessed to many people, oh God, my Father. We speak of blessing of God and strength of God. We speak of God, my Lord, God, a greater extension in their ministry, in the mighty name of Jesus, oh God, my Father. A greater glory will be revealed to God in the name of Jesus Christ, oh God. We bless them in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit of God Almighty. Father, once again, I bring every single one gathered today, all the servants of God, Lord, as they honor this moment, you would bless them and their ministry, oh God, Father. All of that, oh God, receive this word, let it not go in vain, let it not fall into the wayside, let it not fall into the Lord's stony ground, let it not fall into the thorn, Lord, ground of God, let it be fallen into the Lord God, good soil, ground of God and they will start to be our hundredfold in the name of Jesus Christ. As we are departing, let your presence will go with us, oh God, Father. I bless everyone in the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit of God Almighty. Jesus' name we ask this prayer, amen, amen, amen. God bless you all, may the Lord bless you, hallelujah. A blessed and wonderful evening in Jesus' name, amen.